We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It is December 21st. It is 10:02. And just announcing for those who are Pittsburgh Steeler Nation, Frank O'Harris passed away a couple hours ago.
The 50th anniversary of the Immaculate Reception.
Is on Saturday, yes. So just our thoughts and prayers to his family. We all grew up with him. Meeting called to order. All three of us are here, so we'll go with consents and approval.
Morning.
Morning.
No exonerations to approve this morning. Minutes for December 14th, 2022, and also the Board of Assessment Appeals for December 14th, 2022. Vouchers, General County Fund, $133,022.26. 911, $10,002,4408. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,0068319. Camp Muffley, $3,0058029. Mason Dixon Park, $1,0010173. Recreation Levy, $7,0084921. Payroll, $1,0027,55213. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $8,0045862. Parks and Rec, $15,0062854. Purchasing Card vouchers, General County, $7,0068052. 911, $7,0057568. Chestnut Ridge Park, $7648. Camp Muffley, $15296. Mason Dixon Park, $37906. Mon County Center, $7648. For a voucher total of $1,226,091.72. No budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on the county website and fiduciary orders for December 21st, 2022.
Not that it's a big, big amount, but.
Did I miss one?
Magistrate Court, $30. $30.49.
I missed it, sorry. $30.49.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With no objection from the commissioners, I'm going to ask to change the agenda for a minute. Mr. Jimmy Smith is here to give us an update weather report, and I think it's important that we all know what's going on, so.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
As you're aware, the Governor signed a declaration of preparedness for the weather event for this weekend coming up. We had a quick brief with the National Weather Service out of Pittsburgh this morning at 9:00 a.m. What we're looking at right now for this weekend is around 4:00 a.m. Friday morning, the rain will turn to snow, potentially turning to ice by 6, 7 o'clock in the morning. They're looking at about almost a 20-degree drop within a two-hour timeframe, starting at 4:00 in the morning. The snow event's not going to be a large event. Right now, they're anticipating maybe just a couple inches here in the Montague County area, but the greatest concern with this will be that flash freeze over to ice Thursday night into Friday morning, probably just about the time people were going out, getting in their cars, and heading out. The other thing that we're looking at is up to 45 mile an hour winds with this event, so that's going to increase that flash freezing Friday morning. And then, over the weekend, we're looking at negative 10 degrees with wind chill factors for Saturday. Christmas Day, it actually starts raising a little bit, the temperatures will, and they're looking at right now by New Year's Eve, we should be up around 50 degrees. So for the next week, we've really got some interesting weather coming, but we have potentially dangerous hazardous weather coming Friday morning to the Montague County area, and I want the Commission to be aware and the public to be aware.
Thank you. Do you want to, or do you want to talk later?
Well, we can mention it now since it fits in nicely with this. Jimmy, I first thought you were going to come up and do a Christmas punk us, you know, tell us about this major storm coming in for Christmas, you know, but no, this is, this is serious.
Yeah.
We have already been in communication with some of the county officials. The biggest one that always concerns us is the courts and the Justice Center. As everybody knows, well, when we approve today, if we approve today, Friday is a holiday for all of our county employees. It's already been, it's already been determined holiday for the state employees, and the Supreme Court has also determined that, a half-day holiday. So we'll be looking at how we're going to deal with if we have this event doing with the workforce, since it's already a holiday. So we'll be looking closely, since it's already a half-holiday, I keep saying that, I apologize, but we'll be looking closely at that. Talked to Chief Judge Gageau this morning, and he's prepared, along with Jimmy Smith and Renetta, he's prepared to address it. We're going to probably talk tomorrow night to see where we stand. I believe you have a briefing at 8:00 that we'll participate in, just to see where we stand. So we can put the word out as soon as possible if we do have a closure for that half-day, because again, it's always kind of a, we can't shut down the courts, but we're responsible for the building. So we work with the judges to, to address those issues as, possible issues as they come up, but we're just being proactive and having the conversation. We'll keep an eye on it with direction from you guys and your weather, weather people as far as how we need to proceed, and we'll certainly put that information out as soon as possible. And I would encourage all the elected officials to filter some of this information down to the employees, just be aware, some may already just want to go ahead and, I would encourage the offices to work on Skele, Risen Cruise on Friday anyhow, since it's only a half-day, but that's, that's up to the offices to, to deal with. But I did want to at least, I think we wanted to at least put word out that, you know, we may have to take further action, and we will be prepared to do that if needed.
Tomorrow night, yeah. So we will make the, the final decision, but we're giving us the flexibility and make sure that the, you know, offices are aware of it and to watch, because safety and security is our number-one concern.
What you're saying, it could be worse, right? When people are getting ready to come in in the morning, so that's certainly something we want to avoid.
Yes.
And then you have the freeze, you have the freeze, which what, what that usually does, and then you have wind with frozen trees, you're going to have paralages and stuff like that. So I appreciate you guys being on top of this. Jimmy brought this to our attention at the beginning of the week, so thank you for keeping an eye on it and keeping us posted.
Yeah, schools will be closed anyway.
Yeah, schools are already closed.
So that's.
So that's already good.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Okay, moving back to number four, introduction of new employees, personnel changes.
I just have one that came in on Monday.
Okay.
For Chestnut Ridge Park, Eric Matthew Johnson is going to be part-time seasonal without benefits. Starting date is December 17th, rate of pay $11 an hour, and he's going to be working on the sledding hill at Chestnut Ridge.
Oh, great. Okay. We now have.
Move to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm still thinking about the snow, I'm sorry. Okay. At this time now, we have comments from the public. If anyone would like to speak, feel free to come for the mic, state your name, address, and explain anything you'd like. Mr. Summerlin?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, too.
I just wanted to give big kudos to Mon County and to the Mylan Park staff for this past week of what happened over there with the Aquatic Center. I know that the USA Diving International was in attendance, and from our Cheat Lake Rotary Club getting the word out, as well as the Commission and others helping Public Works getting the banner up, welcoming the folks downtown that were here. I think it was an opportunity for Mon County to really shine, and Mylan Park especially, and the folks that we talked to that were in attendance from the Olympic Trials Committee seemed pretty excited about what the facility is and all the effort that went into it, and I heard they were thrilled at the attendance and the folks that came out to be a part of that event. So I just wanted to say thanks to the vision from years ago, whenever that all came to fruition, and all parties working together, Mylan Park, the Commission and others, to WVU and the Ruby Trust, all the people that really helped contribute to make that happen. It was a true opportunity for Mon County and Mylan Park to shine, and I think we knocked it out of the park, so thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the positive comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we're going to move on for a presentation from Mon County Health Department, the Quick Response Team that has just been amazing and look forward to sharing it with the public.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you.
Whatever, whatever suits your need. I want to talk for just a minute about a program that has been working in the background for the last couple of years, and we, in public health, frequently are in the shadows and don't get a lot of publicity. And so.
Thank you.
Knowing that Appalachia has struggled with opioids and unintentional opioid overdoses and deaths, the federal administration, which is the, SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse Mental Health Administration, put out a notification of funding, and we applied back in 2017 and got funded to start a QRT. QRT stands for Quick Response Team, and the funding required that it have four main components. There had to be law enforcement, there had to be peer counselors, there had to be EMS, and there had to be public health. And we stay in close communication with our colleagues across the state in public health, and knowing what has happened in other counties, particularly in Campbell County and Canoa County, and seeing the number of overdoses and lack of infrastructures, we took this opportunity to start and devise a QRT. Unfortunately, at the time, there was not a blueprint, and many people start one that is based on law enforcement or on EMS, and we took a different approach. We use the peer counselors, people with a lived experience who now have documented sobriety, who can make an inroad and an interaction with people who have substance use issues, and we can try and get them into rehabilitation. And so I'm going to have our team come up and go through, team? And I'm going to let you introduce yourselves and go through the slides. This is our advancer, so whenever you need one. What's your name, where you're from?
I'm Joe Class, I'm Montague County Health Department, and I'm the Assistant Coordinator of the Quick Response Team.
Hi, Brittany. I also work at Montague County Health Department, and I am the Coordinator for the Montague County Quick Response Team.
And my name is John Dower. I'm the Executive Director of West Virginia Sober Living and kind of do the implementation portion of the Quick Response Team.
Yeah, so, I mean, Dr. Smith actually gave a lot of the, did a lot of the work for us, thankfully, so, but this, you know, as you can see, we're always adding to our partnerships. You know, when we started off, maybe there was, you know, six or seven organizations, but now, you know, we easily have over, you know, 15. I know we're missing some logos here, but we're constantly growing. Next slide, please. So, you know, what is a Quick Response Team? If you've seen one QRT, you've seen one QRT. You know, every county is going to have a slightly different makeup of, you know, what a Quick Response Team is, and as, you know, Dr. Smith had mentioned, ours kind of focuses on the peer recovery coaches who are the boots-on-the-ground operations. But, you know, the bread and butter of a Quick Response Team is that when we receive reports from EMS, law enforcement, 911 about overdoses, suspected overdoses, and we receive those reports ideally within 24 to 72 hours, and that information is given to us via HIPAA compliant Dropbox, and then our peer recovery coaches or our peer recovery sports specialists look at that information, try to follow up with these individuals, or the individual's family if it was a fatality. And we've actually made some pretty strong headway in our ability to get data. We right now have an automated report from Mon EMS that every day we get their EMS reports. So we're able to respond in many cases within 24 hours or less to some of these reports. And then, you know, we also have, you know, our peer recovery coaches, and we'll let, you know, John Dower kind of talk about some of the more specifics of it, but, you know, they offer individuals with, you know, disabilities and other current loved ones access to services. And really, on the boots-in-the-ground, it's all about giving them services, whether it be recovery services, social services, healthcare, it's anything that can help them get on the road to recovery. Next slide, please. And then, you know, some goals, you know, lower morbidity and mortality rates in individuals misusing substances, increasing access to life-saving medications like naloxone, work, you know, constantly training individuals on naloxone and giving out naloxone to be used in opioid overdoses. And I'm sure many of you know, but naloxone basically reverses the effects of an opioid overdose by basically getting them breathing again. It works very well, it's very safe, and we've seen a lot of benefits of increasing naloxone distribution in our area. We also interface with individuals who have survived an overdose, increase access to community-based services, lower prevalence of communicable diseases, track efficacy of program, and publish research. And, you know, really a little bit broader is, it's, we try to innovate, you know, with all the different partners and groups we have on our QRT, we're always trying to see, you know, what can we do better? What can we do that, what can we do that's different that'll help our county or our, you know, our area? And so, you know, we're taking, taking the fight to the streets and trying to really, you know, help, help as many people as we can.
Can you change this line? We've already, we've already covered a good bit of this, so I can go ahead and ask John to step in and kind of talk about the work that he does. They're kind of like the, the main part of our QRT that's able to follow up with individuals, so they're the boots-on-the-ground, and we couldn't have the success that we have without his program.
Well, that was way too nice. I think that the one piece that we didn't talk about and we didn't consider from, from what we spoke about is it sounds reactive instead of proactive, and our county QRT really took a proactive approach. So we don't have to wait for a first responder report to engage this population. We are regularly, literally every day, on rail trails and soup kitchens, at sobering centers, at basically any vulnerable population area where we may interface with individuals experiencing substance use disorder. We understand that it's not solely about engaging them in treatment, and let me broaden that a bit. It's difficult to ask somebody that isn't in the right thinking process in their brain, they're stuck in their amygdala, their fight-or-flight response, to make these broad life choices. I'm going to change my life, I'm going to enter treatment immediately. Oftentimes, it's about building relationships with the population and treating them with dignity and respect, and unfortunately, there's a lot of stigma for individuals experiencing substance use disorder. So when our individuals that have lived experience and specialized training interface with them, first it's about building a relationship. We often follow these individuals for six months to a year to track outcomes, because this isn't just about getting them through the door of a treatment center, because we, unfortunately, across our country, have a very high AMA rate or leaving against medical advice rate. So we want to just engage them, and their needs are going to change differently from when they're in active substance misuse to early recovery to later recovery. And those needs may not be so apparent. Individuals may have animals, and they can't consider treatment unless their animal's taken care of while they're engaged in treatment. They may not have a roof over their head tonight or a meal in their stomach, and if you're just asking them about the capacity to go to a treatment center, you're missing the forest through the trees. So we really look at a very long-researched piece of theory from a guy named Abraham Maslow, and it's called Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, and it really looks at basic needs moving up, a pyramid sort of approach, and that's really the emphasis for our team, is to do these engagements with a sense of dignity and compassion, with building rapport with the population, with understanding that we're non-judgment, because we've literally walked a mile in their shoes. Being a person with substance use disorder myself and in long-term recovery from it, it's vitally important to me that I'm able to give back to my community. Unfortunately for me, a lot of my self-destruction occurred in Montague County and in Morgantown specifically, and I'm blessed to be able to, to bring my recovery to Montague County and to Morgantown, and to be able to give back, and I promise you, if my team was here, they would say the same. They would say that this is their purpose, this is their life goal, is to make an impact on largely the, the greatest health disparity issue that we're going to have while I'm on this planet, is substance misuse. And a lot of notoriety comes from talking about opioids, and it gets all the, the national attention, and I'm not here to say by any means we don't have an opioid issue inside of Montague County, but we also have an alcohol issue, we also have a cannabinoid issue, we also have a methamphetamine issue, and if we're just solely focusing on opioids, we're, we're going to miss a population that costs, from an epidemiological standpoint, hundreds of thousands of dollars per individual because they're not receiving the services that are actually needed. So we wouldn't be able to do it without the team from the Health Department. The team from the Health Department, they can pull the data, they can get us the reports, they can get us through the, the doors of the, of the locations we need to get into. At the same time, they're going to be able to track our outcomes in a longitudinal sort of way, so I can come in and talk to somebody like the, the county commissioners and say, hey, this is making an impact, and this is why it's making an impact. I'm also lucky enough to be an adjunct professor at West Virginia University and know that we have a transient population, so we don't just look at individuals that reside in Morgantown or in Montague County 100% of the time. We, we're looking at educating individuals inside of the university or the post-secondary education system that is coming through our community, as well as the western end of our county, which is much more rural and much more difficult to, to gain access to, and unfortunately, as we'll see in slides here in a few minutes, this isn't a problem of just downtown Morgantown, this isn't a problem of just one specific socioeconomic class or one specific race, ethnicity. This is, this crosses all, all socioeconomic statuses, all vocations, all educational levels, and I'm really honored and blessed to be part of such an organization that really does make an impact in our county. So we can go through the slides, or we would be happy to answer questions.
Go ahead. I have a few things I wanted to say here. Go ahead, next slide, please.
So we can talk a little bit about success in numbers. About half of the individuals that we engage, eventually, we're, we're getting them into some version of treatment. 10,500 naloxone doses have been disseminated in our county, and these are approximately, these are all approximate numbers. These aren't guaranteed numbers, because the state doesn't give us the, the software to follow them completely. 13,000 interactions, so as I said, we're following these individuals longitudinally, so when we engage with someone, our peers are following up with them on a weekly basis to engage them and see what, what's changed in their life, what new social services may they need. You know, those individuals referred to, to treatment, it's a big number. That's not a long period of time for 1300-plus constituents of this county to be referred to, to some version of care, and that naloxone training number is definitely inaccurate, because I've trained another 50 to 60 in the last week, and we'll continue to do that. We need to have the tools in the toolbox to help save lives, and this, this organization, this initiative of a Quick Response Team really helps us with those tools in the toolbox.
For perspective, is this a yearly or in the last two years?
This is to date, since the QRT started. I think the naloxone numbers are probably a little off, because we didn't start really tracking until the past year, so before that, they were rough estimates, but as far as interactions and individuals referred to the QRT and that percentage, that is since we started collecting this data in 2020.
So in two years, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next slide, please.
You can skip that.
Yeah, you can go to the next slide.
So I think this one's kind of a little bit important. So ideally, you need services for everyone. I come from a clinical background that looks at disability, and oftentimes, families or family members of individuals experiencing substance use disorder are often left to the wayside. They don't have resources, they don't have any tools, there's no place to say, hey, my loved one has a substance use disorder, what can I do? So we have family grief, we have family planning, we're really looking at lowering those communicable diseases like hepatitis C and HIV rates. Unfortunately, from a nationwide standpoint, there's a specific county in West Virginia that's rates are, are skyrocketing, and eventually, because we are on the I-79 corridor, those, those rates are going to come our direction, so we're doing everything that we possibly can to mitigate that. You know, we're looking at the, the child end of this, because if, if we want to really make an impact in breaking this epidemic, we don't, we can't just focus on individuals with substance use disorder, because they're often parents, and if we're not providing resiliency and services for those childrens, like things through WIC, we're not, we're going to be dealing with the same problem again in 15 to 18 years. And while it creates job security for me, it also creates a lot of people that I don't, I would love to, to not be needed in the position that I'm in. I would love for, for my job at the university, teaching on addiction studies, and as an Executive Director of a, a behavioral health organization, not to be needed, but unless we deal with grandparents that are raising a generation of children that they physiologically aren't meant to raise, unless we address this, sure, unless we address this issue of individuals experiencing substance use disorder right now, and we help the, the families of young infants that are exposed to substance misuse, we're going to deal with this generation after generation after generation. And once you get individuals into recovery, there are a lot of barriers. Oftentimes, things like dental care or access to appropriate clothing to go to a job interview comes in, so being able to work with the dentistry at the Mon County Health Department can really give individuals the appearance that increases self-confidence and self-worth to get back and be taxpaying members of our, our society again. And STI testing, that kind of goes with that communicable disease lens, that the ability to, to work on social determinants of health and help individuals holistically get well will give them the capacity to consider their substance misuse. We have Officer Morgan here. You know, he deserves that. You know, when I was in active substance misuse, police were certainly not my friends, and never, never in my life, before the QRT, did I think I would develop a relationship with a police officer that I cared about like a brother, and that's true, that's, that's honest. There are individuals that look through, that look at substance misuse as a moral failing, and they want to prosecute their way and criminalize their way out of this problem, and it doesn't work. And then you have officers like Jason Morgan that give individuals a chance to have a different path in their life. We've responded to many non-violent criminal actions that Officer Morgan has, has dealt with, and he was nice enough to give them the opportunity to engage in a treatment process. He's personally been at QRT overdoses that saved the lives of my friends, as, as have EMS individuals that participate here. Without law enforcement-assisted diversion, we're going to be paying as taxpayers of Mon County way too much to address this problem, because it's not a, a one-off to send someone to, to incarceration, we're paying on a daily basis. So shifting that lens from looking at it as a moral failing to a disease and how do we treat a disease, looking at more efficacious ways of spending our money to address the substance misuse problem that we have in our county, is partially because of officers like Jason Morgan that are willing to, to look at this from a disease model and say, we can do something about it. Outreach, I'll let these guys talk about outreach, because they, they hold the.
Can you take this one, I'll get the mentoring one?
Yeah, so, you know, we do a lot of different outreach events, you know, and we work with a lot of our partners, including the U.S. Attorney's Office. You can see some examples. You know, recently, we did, we had a human trafficking 101 identifying and helping victims, and that kind of, you know, gave some additional knowledge and training to QRT members about, you know, what to look for as far as human, human trafficking and try, you know, try to help those individuals. We also have a grief support group that meets at the Sabra United Methodist Church, and so that's for people who have lost a loved one to substance misuse, and they can go there and talk to our faith-based partners, as well as one of our community members who's on our team. Because, you know, because it's not just for the people that have, you know, survived overdoses, it's also, you know, the people who have, you know, sadly died, you know, individuals around them, oftentimes substance misuse, you know, it's not just a single individual, it can, you know, it, it will affect, you know, everyone in that close proximity, whether actively or passively, and, you know, having a grief support group, I think, really has a lot of promise, and really helps some of those individuals with dealing with, you know, the fatality.
So one last thing that I wanted to talk about was our mentoring capacity.
So one last thing that I wanted to talk about was our mentoring capacity. Um, over the past couple of years, we've been able to help some other quick response teams and organizations get something like this started in our own community. So a couple of years ago, we received a funding opportunity to mentor this other, um, Health Department in Kentucky that was looking to start their own quick response team. And I think one of our strengths is that we've been able to overcome a lot of challenges and we've documented those along the way. So we can share, um, we can share a model with other agencies and health departments and initiatives that want something like this in their, in their communities. So because of our success and being able to track this and document it over time, we've been able to help other QRTs get established in their own county or state or wherever it might be. So they can address the issues in their own community. And now Dr. Smith has some slides.
I just want, one of the, the early points, thanks guys, is, um, how do we collect the data and what's that really mean? So this is sort of what it all results in. So, uh, these slides are not mine. They're a little busy, so I'll make this apologies upfront. Uh, we're going to look at 12 months' worth of data that comes from, um, Vital Statistics. It's August 1st of '21 through July. So until this last summer and it's available at that particular thing. So this is nationwide and the little circles, if you will, are the probabilistic, the predicted number of deaths that we're going to be seeing. And the solid bar is the actual numbers. Now these are, these have a little bit of width to them because not everybody who gets, uh, a death certificate gets reported as, uh, as a substance use type of thing. So there's a little wiggle room there. But the, the peak, and of course, you know, the data has continued, but the goo- if there is good news with this is that the, the trend has been somewhat downward. And then let's look specifically at West Virginia. And here is all opioids and/or stimulants. So these are unintentional overdose deaths, which is what we were tasked to, to make an impact on. And so again, the, the circles are the predicted and then the solid bar is the one that is actually the, uh, the number. And as you can see, the trend has gone downward and that is about a 7% decrease. And that 7% is 112 people. And I'll let that sink in for just a minute. 112 fathers, mothers, sisters, brothers who are among the living, who have an opportunity to get rehabilitated and become a valuable member of society. So nationally, the entire nation has had a bit of an increase. These, these data are starting to show that they're up. But in this area, we're trending downward. So I can't claim, I wish I could stand before you and claim that, that all of our efforts have had this impact. But clearly in this particular arena, there is something that is going, going better. Now this is way too busy for me, but if you look at the, uh, the total number of deaths, it's still the same number, 1,427. And that's until July. And, and again, there's, there's been additional. But opioids is the number one player in this group. And then out of that synthetic opioids. So that's the, the fentanyls and it's not just, uh, the one thing. So, and then psychostimulants and then we break them down into other categories. So now we're going to look at overdose, a little overdose deaths here in the state of West Virginia. And then again, this is provisional because these always get sort of tweaked a, a bit. And so our population here is listed as 105,822 people. And the, the number of deaths now moving to March 22nd, um, that's 47 in that, um, time period. And if we look at, I'm just going to skip that one. That's too busy. But here's, here's the, kind of the money shot, if you will. And we were graciously given this, uh, map, um, by the Officer Drug Control Policy. And as you can see, the top bar, uh, across the top, that's the Mason Dixon line, if you will. And then you can see a line here that separates Preston County from Mon County. We don't have all of the western part, but then you can see Fairmont. Didn't mean to touch that. And each one of the, the dots is an EMS call that was associated with an overdose. And then there is a square around it. And, uh, the square is either colored, as you can see in the, in the middle of, of downtown, there's that kind of salmon colored, if you will, that is a consecutive hotspot. And then the clear, the white pattern is there's no pattern detected. They're just random. And so we do see overdoses that occur everywhere in the populated area of our county. And it doesn't matter if it's at Greystone or out on Pier Pont Road or Star City, Granville, Westover. We're seeing overdoses everywhere throughout there. As mentioned earlier, substance abuse is not contained within one particular population. And this is a, a blow up of the downtown area there. So this is sort of where we are in, in collecting data. This gives us the ability to concentrate our efforts. I think that, uh, John pointed out the role that the peer counselors, they are the tip of the spear. And they can make contacts with people that I don't have the opportunity. I'm just going to be some random guy and may not be able to make that connection. But they do, and we have a great deal of, of success. And so this particular model has gained some notoriety, both in, within the state and within the nation, and now is, uh, is considered one of the, the models to choose from. And I have one last individual I want to call on from the crowd, Dr. David Didden, who's with the Office of Drug Control Policy. And maybe you could address what the state views of our QRT. Thanks, buddy.
Thanks, Dr. Smith. Uh, good morning, Commissioners. David Didden. Um, as much as I admire Dr. Smith, it gives me a little pleasure to correct him publicly. I'm actually with the Office of Maternal Child and Family Health. I'm a family doc, uh, retired from my, uh, primary care practice in, uh, 2020. Uh, I was local health officer like Dr. Smith in Jefferson County. Um, and now I work as Medical Director of Overdose Prevention and Innovation Projects for the Bureau for Public Health. So I've been studying and following QRTs across the state for the last two years and I'm incredibly grateful that the Mon County QR team, QRT has allowed me to listen in and participate in some of their meetings, which are fantastic. Um, but honestly, I'd much rather just take two or three minutes to speak to you as a fellow West Virginian. Uh, I left Shepherdstown in 1984, joined the Air Force. Um, when I moved back 20 years later to open up a, a private practice, I noticed that we're dying. I was going to funerals for people younger than me, uh, violence, uh, related to drug trade, overdoses. Um, we're in a tight spot. And this model, what you have going on in Mon County is, I think, one of the best examples of how we're going to get out of this tight spot. It's got to be local. It's got to be led by people who know the community, who know the resources. And we have to empower those folks to, to have the resources, to connect people when they're ready to get the services and support that they need. As John said, we're going to be dealing with it regardless, whether it's in the criminal justice system, whether it's in the schools, whether it's in the hospital system because of HIV or hepatitis C, uh, preterm births, low birth weight babies. All these we're having to deal with and we're having to pay for. And this model of going to the homes of the people who are struggling, our neighbors, our fellow West Virginians who are this close to death and despair, that's what works because they're non-judgmental. They're not trying to force someone into a particular pigeonhole because that's their agenda. They're there to listen. They're there to give frank and honest feedback, but you know, not to get too, uh, emotional about it, but they're there to give unconditional loving kindness to these people who don't know what that's like. And what I'm seeing happening is in these communities where we have resources like this, it gives people a cause to, to, to look for tomorrow to be a better day. And just to close, from a public health perspective, in terms of being able to reverse the impact of an epidemic, getting into those homes and being able to connect with the children that are struggling with these adverse childhood experiences, that if we don't reach them by the time they're eight, nine, 10 years old, we're going to have a mighty, mighty task ahead of us to be able to reverse the effects. But when you connect with somebody and you get them resources and you can, you can, uh, get their kids into counseling, you can work on their housing, you can work on, uh, infectious disease prevention, whatever it is their needs, you give the family some stability. You give that child a sense that, hey, there's somebody out there who cares about me, that life is worth living and that I'm loved. And that's how we're going to reverse this. Um, so I'm so grateful for Mon County and for your leadership because you're leading the state in this effort. Uh, Mr. Klass is going to come, uh, when we do a statewide EMS call and is going to help, you know, other agencies around the state learn about how they can get more naloxone in the hands of people who've str- had an overdose. So, uh, be happy to, to step back now, answer any questions. Um, but just thank you and appreciate your ongoing support for this fantastic team.
Thank you. Did you want to make any comments or questions?
Yeah, certainly. Well, are you, are you done?
Are you finished or?
Yes, sir. No, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to, well, take those. Sorry for the length of the presentation, but it's a lot of work and, and we don't always come out of the, into the spotlight to talk about that. But I'm particularly proud of the work. There's a lot of people under this tent and that's what makes this go. And I'm very proud that, that we've been able to step up as a leader in this particularly difficult and complex problem. And so we certainly appreciate your all's support in allowing the Health Department to move in these directions. And we look for this model to be applied to other issues of, of chronic health issues. So thank you again. Uh, Dr. Smith, go ahead.
No, I'll say, I just, I think it's pretty, pretty remarkable that we, we see so much with these issues more in enabling and facilitating rather than treating it at the root cause and, and the rehabilitative aspect of it that you're talking about. And, and reaching these people right after they've been in a crisis seems like a, a wonderful thing. And I, I really look forward to seeing how this project keeps moving forward and really, really proud to be a part of it in any, any way that we can be.
Thank you. Sure. I, I listened to this presentation when the QRT team won the award through who? That was through-
The U.S. Attorney's Office recognized this QRT. Yes, sir.
And these guys did a presentation in our Health Department meeting and I was like, we need to get more people in the public to, to hear this, to understand this. Because it really is staggering. Um, you know, I'm looking for that word to say, you know, was i- it, it's just hard to describe, um, the, the, the depth, the breadth that you guys are touching and the, the good work you're doing. And I really appreciate the fact that you're actually now taking this model and, and helping spread it elsewhere. We're just not, we're, we're working to help our neighbors. Um, John, you're in Leadership Mon, right? Tom and I talked to you there where you asked some good questions where you were talking about our opioid dollars and, and when they came, how we were going to, how we were going to deal with those. And, you know, I think our collective response was, we're going to deal with it by getting the people in the room that know better. Uh, and you guys know better. Um, so I appreciate your work, appreciate your work you're doing at the state level. Um, what's the committee that you're on, the Governor's Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're, you're, you're not only helping the neighbors that, you know, in the community you grew up in, you're, you're taking it farther. So I really appreciate your, you're in everybody, everybody's work with your team. Uh, it's really amazing. And the, the number that sticks out to me like this, this last April number of 47, these are 47 of our citizens in the past year that have-
Correct.
-that have died. Now you take every single one of those 47 and all the people they know. I mean, if they knew 10 people, that affected almost 500 people in our county. Um, you know, and it's a profound, profound effect. Uh, so this isn't something and it's just not, it could happen to any one of us. I mean, 47 people, that's half the, this room times two, they would just, boom, gone in a year. Uh, when you, when you think about it from that standpoint, and again, everybody looks at things and is like, well, I don't know if they're ever going to be able to do anything. And you just kind of shrug your head and go on to the next thing. But it's really important that people pay attention to this. That's why I want you to come and talk in our meeting, uh, because people need to know the work that you're doing and, and assist you. And, and that's what we're here for. How can we help you? I mean, first question is, how, what, what's that next step? So when we have that, that funding that comes down from these lawsuits, you know, we looking at you guys, you know, as far as how do we want to make best use of this so that we help you solve this problem? So I really appreciate you guys being here and I appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
A couple of things. First of all, you may not know, but Officer Morgan was involved in doing something even before this. He personally was the first law enforcement officer who worked with the Pantry Plus More program. He believed that food was medicine and he was seeing what you're seeing and felt like here's another way of resolving the issue by getting the food to the kids who then didn't have to worry about what was going on at home. And I can't say enough, um, for what Jason's done. I mean, even to the point where, where we didn't even have any freezers and coolers at the time, he went out and got the community so we could put the food in there and then he was delivering it. So again, I personally also want to thank Jason because what he has done for this community, no one knows about, but he's always in the background and I, I do appreciate that. The second thing is, and Sean hit on it when we were talking to John about, I know you're on the State Committee and the funding. I guess this is my question. We are a very active county commission. We don't want to sit around and wait. So I guess my question to you all is, there's funding out there. What do we need to do to help get it moving so we can get it to you so it doesn't sit there in a $1.2 billion surplus? What can we do to work with you or with our state-elected delegate officials to get this going? With the, uh, come in January, you know, the, the sessions going on, I don't want to wait that long. We can't wait that long. I think we all realize that. Uh, you know, as a guidance counselor, every other month, I see one of my former students who overdosed. So my question to you is, if you can't tell us now, please get back to us of what we can do to expedite things, to get the money moving so we can get the money helping you all.
We'll be happy to return with a short list.
Okay, that would be great. We're, we're, we're known to do that.
I, I trust you will. It'll be short.
Yeah. But again, thank you so much. I know if some of you have to leave, that's fine. Uh, because we have other things we're going to take care of. But again, on behalf of the, the citizens, we appreciate it and I can't tell you enough of how much we need you to be a part of our solution.
You have two more members of your team that you didn't introduce. I know Jamie's one of them. Uh, stand up and tell everybody who you are.
Maybe more for, for, for her to help.
Okay. And the young lady in front of you?
Okay. Um, hi, I'm Caitlin Jones. I'm a MSW graduate student from WVU. So I'm proud to be a part of this. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. I didn't want to leave you guys out. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, Commissioner, score, I, I would just invite any of you who want to, we have a standing meeting every Friday from nine to 10. We have a Zoom call. If you're interested in, in visiting and just sort of seeing how that version of Hollywood Squares all works, uh, there's a lot of people under the tent. We're always, you know, trying to be more inclusive and bring other people because they all have a different viewpoint. We'd be glad to, to ha- give you an invitation. Just contact me. I'll get, send you out the, the Zoom invitation or I'll send it to the Ramona. And, um, I think that it, it's always good that, uh, the political leadership of the county gets seen to, to be involved in this as well. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Dr. Smith. Obviously we'll-
We got Jill and Mary Wade.
We'll participate.
We have some others. Want to just stand up and introduce?
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't see you beside.
We have a post here.
Uh, my name is Jill Poe. I work for the ODCP.
My name is Jill Poe. I work for the ODCP as one of your regional coordinators. So I work specifically in your county.
Oh, great.
She gave us the maps.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I couldn't see you.
I'm Mary Wade Burnside. I'm the Public Information Officer at the Health Department and I've actually been with the QRT since the first meeting and I help publicize them and things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We rented a bus.
Yeah, I know. So if you want to leave, I truly understand. But we thank you again and we look forward to hearing from you. I'll wait a second, sir. Moving on, do we have any grants that Colin can, yes, we do?
I just have one thing. RDVIC is applying for emergency solutions grant and they need, it's a form to see if local government approval for shelter activities. We've had this signed in the past, so.
Move to approve the present, sign the documents as presented?
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. Any correspondence?
I guess we had one come in yesterday. This is the administrative order from the Supreme Court of Appeals regarding the legal and judicial holiday half-day on December 23rd and December 30th as per the Governor's proclamation. And I think you guys, we'll talk about that later in the meeting.
Did you all?
I do have one piece of correspondence and I forward it to you. This is to forward on to the Department of Highways. It's from a citizen in the eastern end of the county regarding the conditions of Mayfield Road off of Snake Hill. As you're aware, there's two entrances to Mayfield Road and actually the entrance off of Snake Hill Road is probably the better one. So if you would forward that on to, there was some, she's referencing some maintenance or some work that was supposed to have been done that hasn't occurred yet. So if you could forward that on to the Department of Highways, I appreciate it.
Thank you. No unfinished business, new business. Consideration of request by West Banko Bank as trustee for the Mon County Redevelopment District Number Two, Mortar in Town Industrial Park to automatically transfer up to $40,000 annually from the revenue fund to the administrative expense fund to cover costs incurred by the district.
Move to approve the request as presented?
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of an appointment of a county commission to the Hazel's House of Hope Board of Directors.
I'd move that we designate Commissioner Arnett as the commission representative to Hazel's, actually it's to Morgantown Community Resources.
Yeah, actually, yes. I second that. Any discussion?
Okay, wait a minute. So clarification. So it's Morgantown Community Resources Board?
Yes.
Yes, they oversee the HHH, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you for doing that. We requested that and both the city and the county now have a representative so we don't get a secondhand information. Okay. C. Okay, this is a long one. Consider for adoption a note authorizing resolution and order of the County Commission of Mon County which would authorize the issuance of its subordinate special district excise tax revenue bond anticipation notes Series 2022A, University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District, Series 2022A notes for the purposes of currently refunding and redeeming a portion of the County Commission's outstanding junior subordinate special district excise tax revenue refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2021C taxable, University Town Center Economic Development District, the Series 2021C bonds, and paying cost of issuance of the Series 2021 bonds. Approve the forms of certain documents to be executed by the County Commission in connection with the issuance of the Series 2022A notes. And three, which would be authorize the execution and delivery of such documents by the appropriate offices of the County Commission and other matters related there too.
Very nicely done.
I missed part of that. Could you?
Well, hopefully we'll have someone here to explain it all.
Move to adopt the resolution as ordered as presented?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Mr. Aiman, did you want to give a Cliff Notes version in English of what everyone understands what we're about to do and?
This should only take about a half hour.
Yes. Short version.
Tom Aiman with Steptoe and Johnson were the bond counsel for the commission for this financing. Also have with me my colleague, Jason Turner, and then also Rob Steptoe from Cruz and Associates, who's the county's municipal advisor for this financing. And then Ryan Lynch with Westridge and his colleague is here as well and perhaps others. But that's all I see.
Okay.
So just to Cliff's Notes version. So the, the summary here is what was, there's a term sheet that was prepared that we basically went out to potential investors with. And that is a summary of everything that's occurring. And I would just hit the highlights of that. You know, there's various information in here about the district and the history of what got us up to this point in time. There's a, there's a wonderful map of the development that's occurred to date and where we are with that and some things that are under construction in the district. We've got some description of our master developer for the excise tax district, which is Westridge. The development of, and you know, various statistics about square footage of what's been developed over there so far. The fact that we have an excise tax that the county is imposed, which is basically a replacement for the sales tax. So the 6% sales tax is converted to an excise tax, which is what repays all these bonds. So all the taxable sales that occur in the district for both retail goods and certain taxable services, that is then collected in a state fund. It's administered by the Tax Commissioner, goes into a state fund, it has to be dispersed by the Treasurer's Office, by the direction of the auditor. So every month, all the collections, they're transferred to the bond trustee. And that's what effectuates the repayment of these bonds. We've got our outstanding debt that's listed here. So you'll recall, most, most of you all have been around for all of this, that we've got outstanding, all the senior bonds. So we've got 17A, 20A, 21A, and then right now, 21B from last year were issued subordinate. So there's a process in the documents that if a certain amount of development and revenues occur, then those bonds get moved up to senior position. So as a part of what's occurring here, that's going to occur prior to closing on these notes. And so there's a Muni cap, has a report that indicates that based on the revenues, based on the development that's currently in place and what's in process, that there's enough revenues to create the coverages over the debt service such that these bonds can be moved up to senior lien. So that's part of what's happening here as well. As far as the terms, the amount, I'll get you the actual amount, 8,490,000. We are going to close, hopefully, if you all are agreeable to all the terms, on the 28th of this month. So fast approaching. There'll be tax exempt bonds, fixed rate like we've been doing, actually not bonds, notes. The, the rate is 6.25%. So I should say that once we went out with this term sheet, there were local banks that were approached and also all the existing bondholders. And what came out of that was a summary, which I'm about to give you as soon as I can locate the right paper, is we got a couple of proposals. You know, a lot of banks, a lot of the local banks were not interested because it was subordinate. This note will be subordinate to the seniors. And also, a lot of the institutionals weren't interested because it's short-term. It was just basically two, July 1 of 24 maturity. So those are more long-term investors. So because of those factors, we had Alliance, Bernstein, and Nuveen, which were two funds that are existing holders of the outstanding bonds. And then Bear Creek, which came in with the first proposal. And so Alliance has the most favorable terms. That's the 6.25% fixed interest rate. The one wrinkle that the investor came back with that we were not proposing was that it's, we were proposing that would be prepayable and starting in April of next year, and they required that they would hold it a little longer. So until it becomes prepayable in September of next year, and then a call premium of 1%. So they get 1% over the amount that's being paid off. They accepted all the other terms. So it was very simple in that they were agreeing to almost everything that we were proposing except for that one item on the call feature. It's good that this has shelves here. So June 1, 24 maturity, that prepayment that we talked about, starting in September 1 of '23, or pay interest as it accrues between now and that maturity. Other things that mentioned, it will be subordinate to those outstanding bonds that I mentioned. And we're anticipating that because of development that Mr. Lynch could speak to, if you all wanted to hear a little bit more about that, there's additional development that's underway such that we believe that this will be positioned to have these notes paid off in September of next year. So that's the plan. We of course have our traditional report from Muni cap that looked at all the revenues and is the basis for the ability to move up the 21B bonds and to indicate the ability to repay these notes. And the bonds will be issued next year to take them out. So... The note order itself, which is the official action that the county is being asked to approve or vote on today, it authorizes the issuance of these bond anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed 9 million. Of course, we're less than that, at a rate not to exceed 9%. And we're at that 6.25. Mature not later than the maturity date of the district, which is in 2043. And of course, we're at June 1 of 2024 for this maturity. It approves the main documents for the transaction, which now we're at a seventh supplemental trust indenture. So that's in your packet. That'll be the main document that we're using to establish the terms for these notes. It approves the execution and delivery of the notes themselves. It approves a placement agent agreement with, so your placement agent here is KeyBank, as you know. So there's an agreement with them that establishes exactly what's occurring here, where they're placing the bonds to Alliance Bernstein and the terms under which that, that is occurring. And Westridge is also a party to that. So it approves that agreement as well. Designates the bonds as bank qualified, which has advantages because you're issuing less than 10 million in tax exempt bonds this year, and approves the, all the members of your financing team, which is Steptoe as bond counsel, Snell and Wilmer as tax counsel. So they're delivering the, the tax opinion, which Fred Williams has done all the tax work for this district basically since inception, and Cruz as your municipal advisor, and KeyBank as your placement agent. So that's, that's the Cliff's Notes version.
Actually, it was very clear. I think it was very explicit for us. Do you have any comments?
No.
I understood almost everything you said.
Yes, so did I.
Good.
We got it. That was very, thank you very much for the summary.
So it's been properly moved in second for the adoption. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. D, to consider for approval requisition number one for the University Town Center Series 2021C Excise Tax Bonds Project Fund.
Requisition is for, excuse me, 10,463,412,48.
Move to approve requisition number one as presented?
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Consideration of a request by Mon County WVU Extension for a conference room AV upgrades.
Move to approve the request as presented?
Second.
This is for additional AV equipment needed at our, the offices used by extension at our Mon County Center.
Monitors that were originally provisioned that we just haven't gotten yet.
Yeah, we hadn't put them in yet.
The quote is for $4,942.88.
Okay. Then Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. And for the record, so from, from a budget item standpoint, we'll, we'll allocate 5,000 for this?
Right. Okay. Just make that part of the request. Consideration to prove the afternoons of Friday, December 23rd, 2022, and December 30th, 2022, as legal holidays per the proclamation by Governor Jim Justice in relation to West Virginia Code 2-2-1, subsection C. Have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second with discussion?
Okay. Moved in second. Now we can have discussion?
So the Governor's proclamation declared half-day holiday for each of the next two Fridays and, and gave the, us commissioners, the option to, to do likewise at the county level. Generally, if the governor would just declare it a statewide holiday, we wouldn't add an action. It would just follow suit. So the purpose of our action is to go ahead and also clarify that we're, we're extending that half-day holiday on those two Fridays to all county employees.
Okay.
Should we amend to authorize the president to, in the event the weather necessitates a closure of the buildings? Or can we just do that?
Let's stick it out as a separate item though.
Okay. So let's do the Governor's, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Let's do.
Now, considering what we were talking about with the possible weather event for Friday, I believe Commissioner Arnett, what you were suggesting is we go ahead and be proactive and if, again, we'll all consult.
Sure.
But if, if the president were to issue a direction that the county offices, county buildings would be closed on Friday, that we would, he'd be able to do so just by correspondence and he'd have our, he has our approval.
Exactly.
You want to have a motion?
So moved what Sean just said.
Second.
Basically gives, gives the president the authority after we discuss on Thursday, tomorrow. And we're going to watch it, yes. Okay, proper move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And finally, to consider for approval requisition number 10 for Series 2021B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
Requisition is for 536,551,67. And give me the breakdown of those. We have 58,847.98 going to Enroam Properties and 477,703.69 being distributed to Preston Contractors, Adrian Enterprises, MUB, and the Thrasher Group.
Move to approve requisition 10 as presented?
Second.
Bob, move in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do we have any other?
I do not.
No.
Okay. Seeing none. Do we have any reports from elected officials or department supervisors? Okay. Seeing none. Sean, you want to go?
Yes. Since our last meeting, last Wednesday, all three of us attended the U.S. Diving Athlete Welcome Reception, which was, went very well and it was a great kickoff to the whole event. I was up there on two different nights and the competition was great and the crowds were great. And I don't think these athletes were used to receiving the treatment, that mountaineer hospitality that they received. So hopefully that will bode well for our, our attempt.
that they received. So hopefully that will bode well for our, our, um, attempt to land the Olympic diving trials. Uh, last Thursday, we had Monland Park, uh, board meeting. I actually, uh, had to go to Charleston for the, uh, Water Development Authority Grants Award meeting. So I attended part of that meeting, uh, via phone, uh, but only was able to participate in about a half hour. As I mentioned, I went, uh, participated in the Water Development Authority Grant meeting. Uh, and there's been a lot discussed about that. After that, I had, um, Mon County Broadband bi-weekly meeting. And then in the, uh, in the afternoon, we had our MAP monthly board meeting. Friday, we had staff reports. I appreciate Todd Perosnick invited my health program manager, invited me over to their Christmas party, uh, at their offices. And then we had our commission Christmas party. Uh, that night, I had to do the USA diving, uh, medals presentation. So again, I was really thrilled to participate in that. I also went on Saturday to watch the competition. And that was the platform. So I wanted to see the platform diving, which was really cool. Yesterday, I went to the Health Department Christmas party. Thanks to Dr. Smith for inviting me. Today's a regular day and as, as we all start, uh, slowing down towards the end of the week, we have our holidays. So maybe the weather events on Friday is a way to just tell people to slow down and get ready, get ready for the holiday with, with your family. Uh, I do want to thank the QR team, team for their presentation. It's the second time I've heard that presentation and it still has the same effect of, you know, wow, you know, the work these guys are going. I do want to congratulate, uh, our prosecutor, Perry Joe DeChristopher, who was named, uh, by the governor to, uh, replace Judge Gaucho upon Judge Gaucho's retirement, uh, this, in January 1. So congratulations to, to Perry. And we will, we as a commission will, you know, help you any way we need to in regards to you, you moving on to that position. And then we'll certainly, as a commission, will, will have, uh, actions to take in regards to working on her replacement. Then lastly, I do want to thank everybody with, associated with the CVV. Jennifer Leonhart for all the work she did with the, uh, the diving trials. Susan Riddle, uh, all, everything. It just, everything went, it couldn't have went better. And, uh, if, if the diving trials don't come here, uh, it wasn't the fault of anything we've done. It's some political move somewhere. So anyhow, um, that's all I have. Merry Christmas.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Skora's. Congratulations to prosecutor Perry Joe DeChristopher. I've been practicing law in this county since 1999 and I've never known the prosecutor's office without Perry Joe there. When I did criminal work, I would have been quite glad that she'd not been there as she regularly beat my butt. But, um, congratulations to her. I'm sure her, um, we will, uh, we'll be addressing her replacement here very shortly. There's a blood drive today, Red Cross at the Hotel Morgan, um, started at 11 o'clock. I think it goes till 5:00. They like appointments, but certainly Watkins are welcome. I guess there's a, there's another shortage as it seems to always be the case. So if you get a chance and you don't mind giving up some of your, your blood head on down there, I'd like to echo again the, the Sean's thanks of the CVV and all the, and the local Rotary Clubs and local swim clubs and, and everybody that pitched in to roll out the red carpet for USA diving. I'd, I'd never seen that stuff in person and it was really fascinating. And those athletes are on a, on a different level. They're, they make me want to hit the treadmill about 22 hours a day. So, um, but it was, it was fascinating to see and I hope we have, get good consideration for the Olympic trials, when they make that decision. And, uh, I think that's about all. So be a Merry Christmas. Hope everyone is as safe. Happy holiday.
Thank you. Yes, uh, want to congratulate Perry DeChristopher. And what that also does, the public needs to understand that, that the commissioners now have 30 days to consider an appointment to be the prosecutor attorney and we will, we will start that process. Jack, we have, it begins January 1st and so on. So we will have 30 days from January 1st. So we will begin that process and figure it out. Um, second, yeah, I do want to thank CVB, Monland Park. Um, what they put on was an amazing program. As we were asked to attend that meeting and to meet and greet, uh, as we were, as I was schmoozing with the different people, the parents were thrilled because the participants were so excited of how they were treated. They had never been treated like that. And it wasn't just a one-time occurrence. It was wherever they went, they got a real good feel of what the Montague County community can offer. And again, I also want to thank Jamie Summerlin for not only his comments, but I did call Jamie and we did meet some of the people who were out on the town. And I appreciate his help in promoting Montague County. And supposedly we will find out this week, that is what I was been told, that whether they will decide on the Olympic trials. Again, I also want to thank, uh, Brian Lynch. I mean, we always throw out, we thank this and thank the MUB and this and that. But we would not have this developed without Ryan Lynch and his, and John Lynch, who really have promoted Westridge. So I personally want to thank you that, I know we can be back and forth, but because of your leadership and because of what you're doing, we're able to continue to grow Westridge. And if you heard the wording that was stated by Tom Aiman, he said, I'm gonna say it this way. There are some new, other new businesses coming, which we're not allowed to state. But because of that, we're going to be able in two years to make those subordinate bonds go up. So again, that is for the public to understand, we will continue to grow. And though we only got the 4 million of the 7 million dollars, or 3 million of the 7 million dollars, this county commission is committed to move forward and we will find a way to fund that and work together because that is one of the key economic developments besides over in the industrial parks. So those are the two areas of growth. And I personally want to thank you for that. Again, wish everyone a Merry Christmas and say correctly, a Happy Hanukkah. So with that.
Bless you.
With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We be gone.